I would like to convene the Monday, November 13th, meeting of the Barrington Select Board. Call to order, roll call.
Harakoff here.
Gibson here.
Aaron Schreck here.
Capiello here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review and approval. Does anyone have any comments around the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, then roll call.
Harakoff, I.
Gibson, I.
Capiello, I. So before I read our directions for public comment, is there any public comment here tonight? Okay, let me read my thing, but you can come on up while you're doing that. Meetings are open to the public, but public participation is limited. If you wish to be heard by the Select Board, please note the two public comment portions of the meeting to speak and of any matters pertaining to the business of the Select Board. In addition, public hearings may be scheduled for public content on specific matters in the future. Speakers must be residents of Barrington, property owners in the town of Barrington, or designated representatives of recognized civic organizations or businesses located in the town of Barrington. When they are addressed and permitted to speak by the Chair, speakers first need to recite their name and address for the record. Visitors should address their comments to the Chair and the Select Board as a body and not to any individual member. Each member, each speaker will be provided a single opportunity for a comment, limited to three minutes. Public comment should be limited to 15 minutes if you're here for that scheduled time. Visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the Select Board may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between Speaker, Select Board, and/or the Town Administrator. The Chair will preserve strict order and decorum at all Select Board meetings. Obscene, violent, disruptive, disorderly comments, or those likely to induce violence, disruption, or disorder are not permitted and will not be tolerated. Complaints regarding Town staff should be directed to the Town Administrator. Now, after that, welcome, and we would love to hear your comment.
So Brian Whedon, 63, Winkley, Ponder. So I wrote down what I want to say because like I can't say certain words now. So I thank you all, first of all, to thank the Select Board for your volunteer work and everything, I appreciate that. So last week, I was watching YouTube video and I watched some of the budget amendments coming up, and the discussion was towards the elderly, disabled, and veterans. As far as evaluation going up, like, most of us don't care because we're not selling. But 9% COLA increases for Social Security as a possible source of income for the budget, while I agree that Barrington has a good exemption policy in effect. It's not a source of money available for the budget increases or whatever. So COLA increases are for the cost of living such as bread and milk, medical gas, if Medicare has increased, you know, for certain Social Security benefits to absorb what Social Security has increased. So it shouldn't be used for taxes as the money is already allocated. The source of town increase in spending is infrastructure. So whether it's police, fire, highways, schools, you know, like, we're gonna have to build a high school if we keep getting the influx of people, you know, and most of people, you know, Dover and Rochester right now is taking our kids, but that's not to be expected in the future. Medical and traffic is brought on by the influx of people because of our lifestyle, and telecommuting is saving, sorry, savings of moving here and developing someplace else. In other words, it's cheaper to live in Barrington than it is other places, you know. So it creates big influx of people. And so shouldn't the source of increase of the target of the, should be the target of the budget? So maybe we should charge more for people moving here, you know, as a source of income versus, you know, taxing the people that are already here. And some of the people have been here a long period of time, you know, we shouldn't be allowed to absorb all the increases on the budgets. So if the veterans are moving here for the exemption, then so be it, you know, charge them accordingly. So if people are moving here, charge them, you know, get your money from them, you know, I understand the budget increases, whatever, you know, we have to pay for what we, what we have or whatever, but they shouldn't be a source of, like, any new monies, you know, like, people are generating this now. I'm not sure if that came out right, but, you know, the influx of people is creating incomes. That's all I have, really. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will be revisiting that at a subsequent meeting. We don't have it on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to, like, address last week's discussion or whatever.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any public comments from those people online? Doesn't look like it.
I don't see anything.
All right, let's move on. Public hearing and invited guests. I don't think there's anyone here from the School Board. So let's move on to our 2024 budget presentation on highways and dams. So would our road agent please come up?
Come on up, Mark. As Mark approaches the podium, so this is Chapter 17 in the Budget Binder. For those following along online, the Budget Binder is available at barrington.nh.gov/2024budget. Mark on camera here.
Isn't this exciting? I've been waiting for this all year.
It's the most wonderful time of year.
Okay, the budget. So for the sake of time, I'm only gonna cover line items in the budget that have changed. Got a lot of ground to cover and don't want to bore you too bad with all the details right up front. Any of the lines dealing with employee wages or benefits, self-explanatory, although I'll touch on line 4112, part-time and temporarily, temporary hourly wages. Last year, this line was suspended to a placeholder because we lost our, our longtime part-time plow guy for the winter. So it was kind of abandoned. This year, we resurrected it to hopefully maybe find a part-time person that can do some routine mechanical maintenance and share in the facilities mowing task that we've been, what we had to do this year. So I, I basically had to devote one full-time guy that I already had to the, to the mowing of all the facilities. So that's what that line is for, to maybe fund a person that we could possibly find to do that. Line 4611, office supplies increased to 1,200 to keep up with increased costs. 4612, postage, so a lot of this is due to sending out letters to people who are but the areas that have, we've been doing the knotweed treatments, which have been successful. This line for the postage is increased to $200. Safety equipment, uniforms. Anybody bought a pair of work boots lately? It's ridiculous. So self-explanatory, raising that line by $500 to 4,500. Nope, sorry. By 1,000 to 13,000. And that's uniforms, gloves, work boots. 4661, tools, hardware, and supplies. This is just, you know, a normal price escalation, raising it from 500 to 4,500 just to keep pace. Line 4350, road maintenance, contracts, and mowing. So this line at this point is pretty much strictly used to cover tree work, tree trimming. We have a bad overhanging limb problem here that really reared its ugly head last winter with a lot of this stuff coming down in one storm in particular, one of them crashing onto the cab of one of our hired plow trucks, putting him out of commission for that storm, plus a couple more. Last year, we started a trimming program on Pond Hill Road, and that was the only road that we did not have a problem on, and I'm attributing that to that trimming. So to continue on this path, I'd like to raise this line from $30,000 to $35,000. And here's the one that killed us, line 4433, vehicle maintenance. So last year, as a result of having four relatively new trucks, we took a gamble that a lot of the repairs would go away. And while the newer vehicles supported that theory, a lot of the older equipment did not. And there were a lot of repairs required to the older equipment. Some of it's normal wear and tear. Some is by inadvertent neglect of one truck being driven in the winter by our part-timer and then basically hosed down and parked till the fall and winter, which is not a good thing. So all kinds of stuff creeped up. Also, we've, as we've lost a few people over the years to retirement and whatnot, we've lost a lot of the in-house knowledge of how to fix things. Used to be the same guy that drove the truck fixed the truck. Such is not the case anymore. It's very tough now to find the person that can, that can maintain his own vehicle because the, and the vehicles are getting more intricate, more complicated. A normal person can't have all the knowledge that it takes to take care of them. Some expensive mistakes have been made. So until we can reach that magic moment when we can acquire an in-house mechanic, hopefully at some point, I'm forced to send these things out more than we have been to get professional care. We're getting to the point where we need that one person in-house that's going to dote over these trucks like a stable full of racehorses, because that's, that's the kind of money we're talking here. So this line definitely got away from me. So regrettably, I would like to boost this line from 65,000 to 70,000 and hope that the carnage, the majority of the carnage is over, at least for a little while.
Your budget said 75,000, you said 70, I think you meant 75,000?
Boost it from 65,000 to 70,000.
Thank you.
Yep.
75,000.
Is it 70 or 75?
I've got 70 here, but.
We have 75.
That's okay, I'll go with that.
That's not how this works.
I'll go with that.
In which area is the typo?
What you submitted was to 75.
Really? Okay. That's what it is. Line 4435, paved roads. So a big reason for the increase in this line is two relatively new items that we've never done before, being the knotweed eradication, asphalt crack sealing. Knotweed program has proved quite successful. Crack sealing will go a long way to buy us a lot of time on some roads that are only mildly cracked and are awaiting their chance to be paved according to the pavement management plan. These two things, along with traffic line striping and an occasional coal patch purchase, requires us to increase this line from 85,000 to 100,000.
Mark, a question about the knotweed. How many years do you think?
I, I am hoping in two more years, we'll be done with it for good, for a long time.
That's great.
Yeah, we've, it's been extremely successful. And the thing is, after, after the second year of application, it's dead enough so that now we can mow it without fear of spreading it all over the place. So from that point on, at least we can gain control of it without causing more damage trying to gain control of it. But you've got to reach that two-year mark with everything that we've sprayed, because it needs the initial application, then the follow-up, the following year to get any stragglers. Line 4439, street signs. This one has gotten real interesting. In addition to an uptick in the usual destruction of these signs, a lot of them have been just plain stolen. Stolen. We cannot keep a stop sign or a 30 mile an hour sign in this, in this town, they're taking them right off the poles, and that's even though we've started using tamper-proof fascinators to fasten them to the poles, they're taking them off the poles anyway. Let's be a real run on 30 mile an hour signs at some college dorm or something, I don't know, but we can't keep them.
A sticker that says you're being videotaped.
You've got a camera up.
Can we? Not saying we have to put the cameras up, but saying we put a sticker on it that says, Kyle, you're being videotaped.
You're counting on the people stealing the signs not also watching Select Board meetings?
I'm pretty sure.
Those groups are mutually exclusive.
Yes, I do. I mean, you know, call me crazy, but yeah, I think that's, they're.
They're very civic-minded, Steve. They're tuning into us.
I think we put stickers on the signs.
So also, each new road that we take over requires us to stock two signs in case of damage. So just the increased cost of the, of the signs themselves, they're all aluminum, so that's going up. So we're forced to raise this line 1,000 bucks from 6,500 to 75,000. Line 4452, paving. So due to using better quality asphalt products and also now using lane joint adhesive on the center joints, which we didn't do when I first got here, it had never been done, this line doesn't cover as many miles as it did two years ago. Between the extra cost of the low recycled asphalt product mixes that we're using, which it's a, it's a better mix, stays flexible longer, but it's $8 a ton more expensive to buy. But it seems, it seems like it's worth it. The, you add that to the regular market increase of the tuminous concrete in general, the price per mile has gone up by a third or more in just two years. Also, we're trying not to let our base coats set for more than a year before the wear coat is put on. Because of that, the progress seems painfully slow, but the indication so far is that it's all paying off. We've gone from a, how many miles can we make black way of thinking to how many miles can we make good? As a result of using our pavement management program, we're deferring maintenance on roads that would require complete reclamation or complete, complete reconstruction, dependent upon the traffic that they carry and the threat that they pose to destroying our plow equipment. It's a little counterintuitive that we're spending money on roads that are in pretty good shape while forsaking ones that are in deplorable shape. And it was tough for me to latch on to at first, but that's the way the pavement management program works. It's all about protecting the investments that you have, that you've spent good money on recently, rather than just running around helter-skelter doing, doing a new, a new road because it's absolutely junk, but letting the one that you did three years ago falter.
Prejage.
So we've, we've done a lot, and we've done it well, but we still have a long way to go. We're looking to increase this line by $50,000 from the current 650,000, 650,000 to 700,000. We'll have some other sources, hopefully, another paving, paving warrant article. We've got other money in the transportation fee capital reserve fund, have a little SB401 money to throw at it. So with any luck, we should have around 900,000 to throw at paving next year.
I'll just interrupt you for one second, Mark. He's just glossing over the work we have done as a town in 2023 and what we plan to do in 2024. There are really great narratives on both topics in the Budget Binder. The electronic documents are online. So if it's a Select Board member or somebody watching at home interested in hearing more of the narrative about our pavement management plan and the approach that we've taken, the roads we've done this year, the narratives and their separate documents cover road reconstruction projects, road paving projects for 2023, and the plan for 2024. I know the Select Board have had them for a few weeks, but I just want to make sure everybody knows those are available because there's a tremendous amount of information that residents can apprise themselves of if they're interested. We're well done.
Line 4435, gravel road upgrades. Lion's share of this is the, the inch and a half stone that we've been pumping into the gravel roads every springtime during the mud season. And since we've started doing this, the springtime mud has been less and less and less severe each year we've tried it. The, the need for periodic grading during the summer has just about gone away. We just don't grade roads anymore. We don't have to, the stuff is that solid. A good indicator of how well this all works, there's a section of Batcaneen Road called Durgans Hill. This section would literally get destroyed every time it rained. You could just plan on every time the sky opened up, he was sending a grader up there. And that stopped. Every road in every town around us got destroyed this year, and that hill, it's been a perpetual problem, stayed solid. So it's paying off. It's paying off. The ride is a bit rough because of the big stones, but none of the stuff's washing into the ditches where we've got to just pay to pull it out later. So normal cost of product increases, stone products are going through the roof because they can. There's not that many suppliers around here anymore, only one game in town. So I'd like to raise this line from 40,000 to 45,000. Line 4350, winter contractors. This covers our private plow people, who without their help, we would be taking a lot longer to clear up the storms. We have recently required more insurance from them to be able to work here. And the Select Board recognize the need to not only retain the contractors that we have, but try to attract other people to work for us as the town grows in mileage and our current contractors start to fade out. They're getting old, they're not going to be doing this much longer. So the Select Board, within the past year, wisely and graciously granted a substantial raise to meet this challenge. This increase, combined with the ever-increasing cost of fuel, that increase of which we compensate these drivers for, demands an increase in this line from 125,000 to 140,000, which is an increase of 15,000. This increase could still end up being exhausted, but we have an emergency fund in case that happens. Line 4432, sand and salt. We've decided to increase this line 215,000 to 225,000, which is an increase of 10,000. The price of salt has stabilized somewhat, but last winter, we inherited another mile of road. And also, the concrete-friendly ice melter that we use on these walkways here comes out of that budget also. For that, we'd like to bump that up by 10,000. Line 4435, bridges, rails, culvert. This year, we replaced close to 20 badly rotted culverts prior to paving over them. There's a lot more to do. The price of plastic pipe of all types has gone up by at least a third since COVID. Thus, we were raising this line $2,000 from 15,000 to 17,000. Moving on to the Swains, Swains Lake Dam, one line that did not increase, but I want to bring it to your attention, is line 4439, which is Swains Dam gate, gate repair for $10,500. None of it got used. So before I get asked the question, why didn't any of it get used? That was destined to cover reshingling of the gatehouse itself. This summer, due to, I had one person busy mowing all the time, and another person, I had to pull off of normal duty to rebuild our garbage compactor building at the transfer station because the mice kind of took residence there and got real comfortable. So the whole thing had to be rebuilt. That all took. I believe that. So that all took resources away from being able to reshingle the gatehouse. So that, that money this year, that 10,500 that was earmarked for that, will be put into the engineering of the actual underwater gate box repair that is needed. And then next year's money, which I'm requesting the same 10-5, will go into the shingling of the gatehouse. So I'm just answering this question before it's asked because it does kind of stick out, you didn't use the money this year, why you want the same next year? That's the answer. With regards to the overall health of the dam, it's in rather good condition, but needing some attention to keep it that way. We have to worry about rebuilding that underwater gate box, which will lead to bigger problems if we don't address it. And also install the riprap filter on the face of the dam, which DES has been strongly urging us to do for a few years now. Both of these items are in the engineering stage right now with the hope that at least the gate box can be fixed at the 2024 drawdown next fall. So this, this topic will be expanded upon with my warrant article presentation to follow. So that's pretty much the nuts and bolts of the budget for the Highway Department. Given the escalation of everything around us, I believe this budget is progressive, fairly well thought out. Biggest increases coming in key places such, you know, paving, mostly infrastructure itself. So to put things into perspective a little bit, if we disregard all of the wage and benefit lines, which are going to be what they are, beyond my control, my proposed 2024 budget is $116,000 or so greater than the 2023 budget. A big chunk of that's going to paving. If we look all the way back to the 2018 budget, 2018, six years ago, still ignoring wages and benefits, that budget was only around $10,000 lower than the 2023 budget that happened this year. So that means that the proposed 2024 budget is roughly 126,000 more than it was six years ago, again, leaving any employee-generated costs out of the equation in both cases. On a budget of over 1.5 million, we have only gone up $126,000 in the last six years. And keep in mind that this department probably has the most inflation-prone items of any other department in town, what with trucks, truck parts, asphalt, steel. The noteworthy part of this is 2018 was well before COVID, when everything cost a whole lot less. Every year since 2019, we've carefully tried to cut things where we could. This year, things caught up to us in a few areas. I am hoping and will work to ensure that this year was an anomaly rather than the standard. So that's it for the budget. Any questions?
I hadn't had a question and I lost it. Oh, I assume that, or maybe I don't assume correctly, that 4350 line, you mentioned mostly tree trimming, are those contractors or are you doing that in-house?
No, that's, those are contractors. We don't have a bucket truck.
Yeah, just checking.
So I just want to thank you for implementing the road management program. It's nice to see that, that's moving forward. And for your work on the paved roads.
Thank you.
For the, the maintenance, mechanical, do you guys contract with certain garages or something nearby, or how do you manage that?
It's whatever one can get you in at the time. They're, they're undergoing the same struggles that we are, that everybody else is as far as too much work, not enough help to do it. We basically just use two, maybe three garages, and it, and it's all a function of, hey, how busy are you?
And recently, two of the big truck shops locally have shut down, and so that limits our ability also. And that's, that happened back when the Select Board first authorized the mechanic position in the Highway Department. We advertised that position but weren't able to fill it. We actually. And we actually, in the most recent vacancy in the highway department, we advertised both a truck driver labor position and a mechanic to see if the labor pool had turned up any willing mechanics. It didn't. We're hopeful to have a good candidate to fill the position as a truck driver labor, but like Mark said, they're experiencing the same problems that we are as far as attracting people to do that kind of work.
Are we actually looking for a mechanic?
We were. We were.
It's not current.
But, but we anticipate filling the position with a truck driver labor, not a mechanic, based on the candidate pool.
We went out, we went out for a truck driver labor and mechanic at the same time, just to see if we got any hits on the mechanic. Regrettably, no.
Does the ABC want to comment now, or do you wanna... You gonna go on with warrant articles?
Onto the warrant articles?
Perfect.
Okay. So, now that I've thoroughly bored you all to death, go over the related warrant articles. I'm gonna speak to them somewhat in order of importance to me, with the last one being the most important. First one's a paving capital reserve paving warrant article, request for a hundred and fifty thousand. Because we bumped that up from a hundred to a hundred and fifty, correct Connor?
Correct, yeah. So, Mark's original budget proposal, truth be told, was adding a hundred thousand dollars in the paving line. Finance administrator and I, in looking at the overall budget, sat down and looked for ways that we could trim down the operating budget proposal. And one of the things, and Mark was amicable to this solution, was taking a fifty thousand dollar increase in the operating budget and adding fifty thousand dollars to the paving non-lapsing article, gives the decision to the voters about appropriating additional money into paving. And so, traditionally, it's been a hundred thousand. We anticipate a hundred and fifty thousand. And importantly, this question came up at the budget committee. We have spent the, all the non-lapsing money that is set to expire at the end of this year, but we've also spent all of the non-lapsing money that's set to expire next year. So, these non-lapsing funds are like a good buffer for us to make sure that we can pick up a paving project or we don't leave money on the table. But with the extra work we did on Tollend Road and Hall Road, we picked up a couple additional scopes there. We've spent those funds. So, like Mark mentioned earlier about paving, if this gets approved in the operating budget, we have a little bit of extra buffer, but that's all we've got.
So, paving warrant article request is a hundred and fifty thousand, self-explanatory, more money does more roads. Bridge and culvert capital reserve request for three hundred thousand dollars. So, we're currently using some SB four oh one funding for engineering for the replacement of the three Young Road culverts, which are in bad, worse, and horrendous shape. The plan is to get at least one shovel ready to be able to attack it as soon as possible. There's currently, last I checked, there's like five hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in that fund. Another three hundred thousand will give us eight hundred and ninety-seven and change. No estimates have been gathered yet. This thing is still in its infancy. But that amount should give us a good head start on one of them, at least. Unfortunately, we'll have to keep this ball rolling on the yearly funding of this because there's a lot more coming, just like those three on Young Road. Lot of culverts in town, big ones that are very, very bad.
Is there any possibility of grant money to offset some costs?
Potentially. I was talking with Vanessa Price this morning about maybe some kind of grant money for the mere fact of, see, in the process of redoing these culverts, there's no pedestrian access anywhere on Young Road. So, if you're gonna go to the hassle of redoing those culverts, you might as well design in someplace for people to walk. And unfortunately, that boots the price tag up significantly more than if you were just replacing a culvert. But Vanessa kinda was kicking around the idea, maybe there was some money available from the standpoint of it being upgraded to a more friendly pedestrian way. So, maybe something in the works there.
So, this is an area that we've been following grant opportunities for a number of years. So, one of the most likely candidates, aquatic resource management funds, ARM funds. We've been talking about the Richardson Pond Dam and how people have to pay penalties when they impact wetlands. Well, that money goes into a kitty that you can secure grants for that improve wildlife crossing, specifically wetland crossings. So, think taking a traditional steel culvert and replacing it with a natural bottom culvert. Those are the type of projects that they like to see, which, that might be something that we're doing anyways on some of these projects. So, they'll likely be available for some funding through those projects. It's not a tremendous amount of money in those, but there is money that we can pursue. One of the other things, you remember earlier this year, we secured a pilot program with the municipal association for grant technical assistance. And there, that guidance, we presented them a couple of project ideas, one being the grants or the culverts on Young Road as a, this is something we're looking for funding for. And so, unfortunately, that type of infrastructure project is like bottom of the barrel for funding. There is, and probably what Vanessa was talking about this morning, there's a surprising amount of recreational connected grant money, think rail trail, like the, some of the bigger rail trail projects going on. They're getting this big federal money, I guess, post-COVID, get people out and recreate. So, some people have been able to replace culverts using that money. I don't know if we're a likely candidate or not. I was actually just telling the chair before the meeting, there's a big pool of money for wetland crossings that impact fish that live in saltwater but migrate to freshwater to reproduce. There's a name for the fish, I need to look them up. But unfortunately, Swains Lake isn't. There's too many impoundments between Great Bay and Swains Lake for that to be an eligible funding source. So, it's, we've been following grant funding for a number of years. There's not a lot of money there. And so, I think, as we did when we talked about the capital improvements program, I think we need to plan on having no grant funding available. We need to, you know, say, we're putting this money aside to do the engineering. We plan in 2026 to do a ten million dollar bond for infrastructure that addresses these projects. If between now and then, we secure grant funds, which will continue to pursue them in earnest, we can reduce that request. But for planning purposes, the signs aren't looking good that there's a ton of money out there for them.
Lots of people walk fish, bike along those causeways, so even if there isn't grants or there isn't in the plan to have extra space for that, you know, having it designed for bigger shoulders or something to accommodate that, I think is really important.
And it's an excellent point, and great minds think alike, because when Mark was reviewing the task order with the engineer for the preliminary engineering, we've asked them to give us basically a preliminary proposal for engineering it as a kind of in-kind replacement and widening. Fortunately, they said that they could take both plans pretty far through the engineering process at not much of an additional cost because it's, the impacts aren't, you know, really, they don't have to do a lot of extra work in order to do those calculations. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to have good numbers where the select board at the time, in, you know, a year or two, will be able to say, okay, if we widen, it'll cost this much. If we don't widen, it'll cost this much. So, that's a great point.
So, as I said earlier, we're gonna have to keep the ball rolling on the yearly funding of this, just to try to get any ways near close to it. The estimates should be, I should have estimates on that within the month on what it's gonna take for those three, those three culverts. So, Swains Lake Capital Reserve request for two hundred thousand dollars. So, another two hundred thousand dollars will give us a total of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-three. So, this would go towards funding the two anticipated repair project, one on the gatebox and the other on the riprap filter on the face of the dam facing the water. This amount will be enough for sure for the gatebox work. Got a preliminary estimate last year, probably it was in the hundred thousand dollar range. I doubt that that four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars would cover both the gatebox work and the riprap filter also. Here again, we need to keep vigilant on the yearly contributions to this fund, at least in the short term here, until we get these two repairs done. It's likely that the gatebox repair will be done at the 2024 drawdown, as it's the most sensitive one, in my opinion. We should look at another two hundred thousand dollar contribution for 2025 to cover the riprap filter, which we will have a better idea of the cost of when the engineering is done, and that also is getting close.
You remember, this is one of the changes that the select board recommended to the CIP, splitting those projects up. They were both programmed for 2024. We split up the gatebox in 24 and the riprap filter in 25. And with the information we have now, a two hundred thousand dollar contribution this year and a two hundred thousand dollar contribution next year should be enough. But like Mark said, we'll get better numbers to advise our 2025 contribution request. And then, we'll have some breathing room.
Yeah. And honestly, after that, after that gatebox gets repaired and the riprap filter gets put in, that dam's in pretty good shape. For quite a while, so.
Quite a while. What do you have? Are we talking ten years, twenty years?
I would say you'd have twenty years. The last time that gatebox was done was in the mid-eighties, I think, so.
Okay, great. Won't hold you to it, but that's helpful to hear.
No, let's hold him to it.
And the last big project there that was, is still in progress is the Lakeside Oak Culverts. And so, that, once we get that project, which hopefully we're in line for some funding for, and so, hopefully, with, when those three projects are done, we can focus on other infrastructure.
Are there many companies that do that kind of work? I know it's hard to find anyone to do any kind of work, but is there a really competitive bid process that we can get multiple bids?
We're trying to find one, one general contractor that'll do both of those at the same, you know, basically carry the whole thing under one roof. I don't know if we'll find them. They're kinda two completely different realms. So, you may end up, it may be a three-party deal in order to get what we're after. You may have the general contractor, he's gonna hire the gatebox expert, and he's gonna hire the excavator for the riprap filter. I don't think you're gonna find one guy that's gonna do all of it.
And there isn't a lot, there are not a lot of people to do it. Incidentally, the people that do especially like the gatebox repair, we've been through the process because we did some concrete work on the dam and we did an underwater inspection. And it's, it's all the same people, you know? We'll go through a competitive process when the time comes, but we can, we can count on a couple of fingers who we anticipate proposals from for that.
Very, very specific niche of work. And I will say, the, they did a, they did a video of the dive inspection. And it's in need. I mean, there's exposed rebar that's starting to rot away. All the shot crepe that was on the side, basically covering the granite blocks. So, the gatebox is made up of granite blocks laid on one another, and they're chinked with shot crepe, covered with shot crepe. Well, all that shot crepe's coming off. So, that's gonna open a door for some water to eventually, if it hasn't done it already, it's gonna intrude behind the blocks into the earthen part of the dam, and you don't want that. So. So, next one, highway department equipment capital reserve. To me, this is the most important topic of the night. Going for a request of three hundred thousand dollars. So, last year, I started beating the drum about pumping up this fund to be able to pay for future needed equipment purchases. We'd been getting a hundred and fifty thousand per year. Last year, I requested three hundred thousand and got two hundred thousand, which was better, but still falls short of the need. By the time we pay for our next two-ton truck, which was ordered in March, and I will probably get it this coming March, we've got the truck, but it's being rigged right now. They're not even gonna look at it until February. We will only have a little more than ninety-four thousand in the equipment capital reserve once that truck is paid for. So, I'm gonna repeat now what I said last year. If we had to keep up with future equipment purchases, I believe we should contribute three hundred thousand to this fund for three years to get us out of the hole that we're in, and then reassess our position. If we don't swallow this bitter pill now, every new piece of equipment will be a warrant article going forward, pretty much. So, here's the facts that I'll lay out to support my request. The first one, the fact is that the equipment costs so much now. A fully rigged six-wheel plow truck with a brand-new sander is well north of two hundred thousand dollars. Another problem is it can take eighteen months minimum from when the order is placed until the truck is put into service for the town. During this time, you can also possibly expect a price increase, which we got on our last heavy truck. And basically, it's take it or leave it. Somebody else will buy the truck if you don't want it. It's hijacking, yes, it is. But that's the nature of things out here now. Secondly, looking ahead, which is what department heads are kinda supposed to do, we have at least three new subdivisions we may be taking over. One of them is substantial. We've already got handed another mile of road in the middle of last winter. So, you add to this increasingly congested traffic, which slows our trucks down that are trying to get to plow these roads in the first place. We gotta get there. Adding this increased lane mileage of these roads to already existing maxed-out plow routes will be frustrating and time-consuming. In a perfect world, I'd like nothing better than when the ridge over here is ready to hand over to the town, I dial up a contractor and say, hey, would you like to run your truck for the winter? It's yours. That person don't exist anymore. That's gone. So, that perfect world scenario is out the door. That means we have to come up with something to cover that. This winter, I've got all I can do to scrounge up enough people to take care of what we got. Potential of losing one of my hired people this winter, don't know yet, not making up his mind. So, as much as I do not want to increase my headcount or vehicle count, we will have no choice but to get an additional truck and man at that point. So, thirdly, to piggyback on the previous statement regarding private contractors, we currently rely on three heavy people and one pickup truck to help us out. It's getting too costly to assemble and insure one of these units for your normal individual. Add to that the fact that very few people don't wanna work all night anymore in stupid, ridiculous conditions, day and night, no sleep. Bottom line is, these people will go away. We will need the additional equipment and manpower to fill those gaps. If we lost all of these contractors right now, this town would look quite a bit different at the end of a snowstorm for quite a while, till we got things gathered up. I hate to sound, you know, come off sounding like the prophet of doom and gloom, but I can't stress enough that we need to have the funding in place to buy this additional equipment. There's a few other equipment needs facing us, like loader replacement, mower replacement, which can kinda be combined in one machine, which I believe I've sent you the memos regarding that. So, in the last six months, I've been comparing woes with all the other road agents around here, and we're not alone. If it helps, we're not alone. One of these is a neighboring town that does not have its own department. It's relied on a resident private contractor for years. He just gave him a two-year notice, lucky for them, they got two years, that he's not gonna be doing it anymore. The officials of that town are absolutely beside themselves on how they're gonna handle this. of that town are absolutely beside themselves on how they're going to handle this, because they have not only no plow contractor, they have no public works facility to go along with it. And they actually called me to say, how can we collaborate on this? Well, what's the collaboration? We got all the equipment and you don't. Where's the collaborating? And also, I politely told them, have a nice time. Luckily, we're not in that desperate of a spot, but I don't want to get to that point either. And we will be flirting with that if we don't pay attention to what's coming. So this year, to me, this warrant article, and hopefully more in the near future, are by far the most crucial parts of this budget. So this is the unpleasant side of a growing town that nobody wants to see. It's the increased cost. And to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Whedon said in his, in his speech a little earlier, you know, there's a lot of residents, mostly locals that were born here, that don't want the town to grow the way that it has been. They liked it the way it was. I feel their pain. I like it that way, too. That ship has long since sailed, and now we're along for the ride, whether we like it or not. Closing your eyes and pretending it isn't real just isn't going to work. Now we need to anticipate and take seriously the problems that are ahead of us. Not that long ago, at a meeting, not unlike this one, Mr. George Bailey and I were in a heated discussion about money. And George informed everybody in this room, the only time Mark ever stands in front of us is to try to extract huge sums of money. And George was absolutely 100% right. No question. 100% right. This business that I engage in on your behalf has become incredibly expensive, more complicated, and requires a lot more forethought than it did when I took over just a little over four years ago. To do this job correctly and get the department to the level it needs to be at, unfortunately, will not accumulate any money-saving field good points where anybody is involved in the process of funding this. It's just not going to be something that's, anybody's going to brag about. The only good feeling to be had is knowing that we did the right thing by stepping up to meet the challenge when we had to, and I personally am okay with that. There it is.
And I put up on the screen relative to the Highway Heavy Equipment Capital Reserve contribution. So one of the things that we did during the budget development process as it coincided with the capital improvements program development was look at what, what we're asking for, for whether it's equipment or infrastructure and how we're going to pay for it. And so some areas, like Highway Heavy Equipment, we have a capital improvement program that goes out to 2034, and we have a capital reserve that we have been making contributions to. And what you've heard from the road agent over the last couple of years, including tonight, is we're behind on this, and we need to get caught up. So Mark and I sat down, got out our calculators, and put together this plan with the goal of getting to a point where we're making the same contribution every single year and being able to maintain. We're not there right now, which is why, you know, Mark calls it a shot in the arm, but for the next three years, we're asking the Select Board to support and ultimately voters to support, adding $300,000 each of those three years into this capital reserve. And so what this table shows you is with our balance available and our contributions, and these are the, the details aren't here of the trucks or the equipment, but this is what's in the capital improvements program as it exists right now, and we even go farther than 2034. We have all of these pieces of equipment in the anticipated costs and the balance. If we add $300,000 for the next three years, we'll be able to level that off at $150,000 contribution every single year and maintain. And we're not becoming flush with money in that account. You know, we, we build up to 600,000 before we have another string of purchases that bring us down to 121, and these obviously will need to be corrected for inflation each year. But this is our plan. We, we did the same thing for the fire truck capital reserve. Rick has done this largely each year in the budget requests, but this is the, this is the backup. This is the why and how we accomplish our goals for replacing the equipment and in doing it in a way that is at least consistent for residents. I'll pull that down unless there's any questions on that. Perfect.
So the numbers with this, they include the, obviously the trade-ins for the old equipment and?
They don't, because we can't use that money to offset a purchase. That's money in just as we have a revenue line for that, the sale of town-owned.
Okay.
Equipment. And so that is not reflected here because we can't use that like a business would in selling a piece of equipment. And so we do collect that revenue. It does offset taxes and expenditures as revenue, but not directly with the purchase of a piece of equipment.
And, and purchasing new is, is better than refurbished or leases or other options? Not knowing myself, I'm just, I assume it is, but.
So, yes and no. The, how should I say, the dependability factor of a used truck, and when I talk used truck, I'm talking pre-emissions used truck without all the exhaust stuff. That truck's going to be a lot more dependable for a lot longer, for a lot cheaper money than anything new you can buy out here right now. The problem is the cost it would take to refurbish it in the first place. You're talking, you know, you're, you're not going to pay the shop rate for any truck shop around here to basically do a body off restoration on a dump truck. It'll, you know, it'll eat you alive. You'll end up buying three of them by the time you're done. So in answer to your question, if you had in-house talent that leaned in that direction, that would like to, you know, take an older truck and bring it back, that would be great. Ain't got that.
You bring up a point about leases, which maybe not so much with dump trucks, but like a police department and cruisers, that's something, that's a model that other communities take where they don't own any of their fleet. They're just on leases for all of them. And, you know, the way you asked the question, is that better? And it's so subjective, right? Because there are, there are pros and cons. From a budgetary perspective, it is a fixed cost, and you know what that cost is, right? And the police chief and I have talked about it at length about, I think it was New Durham that most recently switched to a full fleet of leased vehicles. I may be mistaken, but one of the communities that he's really familiar with. And there are definite advantages to it. And it's, but is it better long-term? And we, we own the cruisers. We can make the decision, okay, hey, let's spend a little bit less now. Hey, you know, we bought one of the cruisers with 2023 money, so we only had to buy one next year within the 2024 budget. And then there's also a, one of the, one of the theoretical benefits of a lease arrangement for equipment is the people that are benefiting from that equipment are paying for it directly, right? When we set money aside in a capital reserve, all of us, you know, that live in town are paying into that kitty for a truck that Mark wants to buy in 2027. I might not live here in 2027, so I'm, I'm contributing to something that I might not benefit for. In a lease arrangement, you're paying per year for something. So even if it costs you more, you're still paying more directly. That's also one of the theoretical benefits that people say to bonding anything. There are communities that bond dump truck purchases. And again, that's a repayment that you're paying. The people that are benefiting from that piece of equipment are paying for it. So some people would argue that that's better. I don't know. I mean, the tradition in Barrington has been saving up, buying with cash on hand, owning and not leasing. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's better. That's just been, you know, the system that we follow.
If the option presents itself and you find a refurbished model of a, the generation that you would like to have, that would be on the table as a way to?
If I could, if I could find a good one, you'd be hearing about it.
Okay, good.
Good deal. Budget Committee?
Yes. Budget Committee, would you like to come up and give your remarks?
I just grabbed another microphone, so you don't have to share.
That's all right.
Not because you can't share, but.
I hope we don't talk at the same time.
I wanted to let the board know that we spent a lot of time with Mark, and he was very open. And we felt that the material he prepared this year was exceptional. Good justification, good, good explanation, if I can say, of everything. Census of the ABC was that everything he presented is really justifiable if we have the means. So we agree with his presentation entirely in terms of what his needs are. And like with the capital, with every warrant article, we will reserve our final judgment once we get the total picture of revenues, what the nets are going to be, to see whether or not it did really, it will appear feasible then. Mark knows that if our finance looks like we have to make cuts from some of these submissions, he's going to be one of the targets that we go after. And hopefully, we won't have to. That's, that's kind of what.
All right. Well, thank you both.
Yep, thank you.
Just for the record, it was Alton, Police Chief just let me know it was the town of Alton that recently transitioned to a leased equipment. So we'll spare the folks in New Durham.
So we'll.
Nora.
Yes.
We'll move on to the next budget presentation, Transfer Station and Recycling Center. Erin, I think you're online.
It's chapter 18.
I am. Good evening. I'm going to share my screen, and I apologize that I am not there in person. So can you hear me okay?
Yes.
For those of you online who do not know me, my name is Erin Paradise. I am the Transfer Station Administrator and the Highway Support Assistant. And I am presenting the 2024 proposed budget of the Transfer Station and Recycling Center. The proposed budget for 2024 shows an increase of $20,048, an overall 5.31% increase from the 2023 budget. And like Mark, I'm just going to go over the lines that have changed. And I just need to move the, the box for the meeting. Sorry. Okay. So the first line is the part-time hourly wages. It, there is an increase of $8,564. This is mainly for the four part-time employees with the increase, the potential increase of us adding the additional year-round hours for Thursday. So it would be, instead of going from 15 in the winter to 20 in the summer, it would be 20 hours in the summer year, uh, excuse me, year-round. And for those, for a refresher, we have four part-time employees that only work when the transfer station is open, and one part-time employee who works when the transfer station is open, as well as additional hours throughout the week.
I just wanted to note, Erin, and you'll see this in the wage and benefit chapter of any wage and benefit impact on the budget. When we did the math to see what it would take to increase the hours, just keep the hours the same year-round, it was less than $9,000.
Yeah.
Less than $9,000, consistent hours. And one other important note on this topic, we did an analysis of the tonnage, per month tonnage of the transfer station. The two busiest months of the year, December and January, when we have our 15-hour-a-week schedule. So we just, we say, oh, well, we have the seasonal residents that come to Barrington in the summer, and so we were open more. No, the, the facility is used most in the, in the off-hours. And so the proposal is $9,000, consistent hours all week, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, for us, such a small price tag in the comparison. Sorry, Erin, I just.
No, it's, it's a good point to touch on because, you know, this will also lead to consistency across the board. Consistently, you know, the, the employees will have 20 hours throughout the year, which hopefully will make it in a more desirable position when hiring. And then also for the residents, you know, we have a bunch of residents who still will show up a few weeks after we closed during the summer saying, oh, I thought you guys were still open. And as well as being able to finally set a holiday schedule where we don't have to open on an quote-unquote off day, because we have found that residents don't really utilize it. We do have a few, but not enough to make it worth, you know, opening on an off day. So if a schedule falls on a Tuesday, we're already open on a Thursday, you know, so vice versa with the Thursday to Saturday. So I feel like it will be beneficial across the board to have the consistency. Again, so the next line is the Transfer Station Employee Benefits line, which is just an increase because of the increase of the operating hours. And that increases $2,000. The next line is the Transfer Station Monitoring Wells. It's something that we have done for years, and I provided the table last year, so we've just kind of moved up. This again is something that we're required to do, testing around the transfer station, inspections twice a year. And it, we get a printout of everything, you know. Connor, you can, I don't know if you can speak more of it, but we have not seen anything that has been above their levels when they've done any of this testing.
Right. So yeah, this is our capped landfill. That's the.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Ground, behind and adjacent to the transfer station. And so, yeah, the only thing that has really changed in the five years since I've been here is the goalpost. So the state has moved the goalpost closer and closer on acceptable levels for certain contaminants. As Erin mentioned, we have continued to stay inside those new levels. One of the changes that they made last year added an additional task for the monitoring, like we weren't testing for something, and now we had to test for it. We were able to do it within the same budget, so it wasn't a big deal. But I, I think there was a question from the Budget Committee about how long do we have to monitor these wells? And I don't know if you've gotten an answer yet, Erin, but.
I have not.
The DES has volumes of requirements for post-closure requirements for these landfills. And we also have a septic lagoon that was also part of that closure. And so maybe someday they'll realize that if nothing has changed in 100 years, then probably you're okay. But I don't think that that, that sunset is on their radar yet. And, you know, we're not unique there. I, it was, I saw a presentation recently about how many capped landfills exist across the state. That was the, that was the practice, right? Every one of the 234 cities and towns have their own landfill that they dumped everything in and buried. And so, yeah, I, yeah, we're all subject to, to the same requirements, but ongoing monitoring for now.
So in the table, it shows projected out to 2025, but for 2024, there's a total expenditure of 4,700. So we've reduced that line by 1,000 to be more in line for what we will be spending. The next line is the Transfer Station Equipment Maintenance, and this line is for the, the use of, purchase of propane for the forklift and the PM maintenance on our three compactors that we own. You know, we've consistently have been keeping up with maintenance, and everything has been good so far with our equipment. So we can reduce this line by 2,200. And we do have a capital reserve for transfer station equipment if we happen to have to, knock on wood, lose one of our compactors. But everything has been running really good so far. The next line item that there is a increase in is our transfer station dues and fees. This line is used for our solid waste operating certificate renewals and basic training for first-time operators, as well as our Northeast Resource Recovery Association membership dues. We have, we currently have eight employees that are SWAT certified, and all operators are permitted, who work at permitted solid waste facilities in New Hampshire must be certified by DES. And all operators are permitted, who work at permitted solid waste facilities in New Hampshire must be certified by DES through the solid waste facility operator training. So it isn't, you know, not just something we require, but the state as well. So SWAT training increases awareness of and compliance with RSA 149M. And then New Hampshire solid waste rules through education and training. Operators that understand the requirements are in a better position to properly maintain their facility, control operating costs and protect public health and the environment. So this is an increase of $100 with a 10% change. The next line is the transfer station operating supplies. This line is used for water, town trash bags, shirts and supplies. The, the big bold letter. Date, the total revenue.
Erin, you're breaking up for just a second. The point Erin's making is that the transfer station is offset by revenue. Oh, I think we got you back.
Okay. Sorry about that. This line will, is increased by 10% or more. This reflects the anticipated 10% price increase for the pay-as-you-throw bags. We also need to increase the quantity, I'm so sorry, the quantity of bags that we order to keep up with the outside bag sales as well as the increase of the transfer station. Again, I stress that this line is offset by bag sales. And like, unlike what we've done in the past where we've kind of done multiple orders. We are going to start doing one large order at the beginning of the year.
Just one note before you leave that slide, Erin. So obviously there are, other than bag sales, there's other revenue generation at the transfer station. So as a point of comparison, in my preliminary estimate for revenue in 2024. I have $234,000 of revenue coming into the facility. This budget is just shy of 400,000. That's 60% funded through revenue. As a point of comparison, in 2017, the actuals were 50% funded. In 2018, it was 52%. In 2019, it was 49%. In 2020, it jumped up to 61%. We did a, uh, we revamped our fee schedule. In 2021, it was 69%. We increased, um, bag, uh, trash bag prices in 2022 is 65%. Uh, one of the things we talked about the budget committee meeting is we're going to set up a joint meeting between the budget committee and the transfer station recycling center review committee to set a target. Recommendation to the select board to say 60% or 75% or 100% of the facility should be funded by user fees. And then we'll use that target as a way to evaluate the prices, um, of the user fees at the transfer station each year. So obviously, you know, you're looking at the budget and budget increases. And we know that those are offset by revenue and we anticipate 60% of the facility to be funded by revenue in 2020. But we can move that slider and make policy decisions in order to meet that target. So probably by the end of the year, you'll see a recommendation from the budget committee, transfer station recycling center review committee of a target for ratification by the select board so we can make policy decisions based on that. So stay tuned.
Okay. I just want to make sure you guys can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So the next line item is the transfer station contracts with waste management. This is used for waste management invoices for glass, MSW, our roadside cleanup event and hazardous waste day. And we, even though the hauling and tonnage rates increased as per our contract with waste management each year. We're able to reduce this line by 2,500.
I have a question, just a general question. I see that, uh, waste management is, uh, they had a vote, uh, this week to allow them to expand property. Do we think that will have any favorable effect on us in terms of long-term contracts?
There's still, there's still a number of steps in their process. So.
So this is just the planning board step.
And I, Erin and I haven't had a chance to talk about this, but it's so funny to read these news articles. Because waste management is actively pursuing an expanded, um, landfill permit. But they're doing other things in the meantime. So like in the city of Rochester, before the planning board, they were seeking approval to basically adjust one of their buildings. At the same time that the state, um, air pollution division authorized an expansion of their landfill. They're like two different things. They're both coincide with them expanding. But like D, the DES that approved their expanded landfill doesn't really have anything to do with the landfill part. It has to do with air pollution. And so they said, oh yeah, okay, well, it's no big deal because of the rest of it. And then the planning board approved the, I'm not an expert. I, this is just like what I've gathered. It's, it's so convoluted. But the planning board in Rochester had a very narrow focus. They were looking to expand one of their structures. And so they said yes, which is like, seems pretty reasonable. I think the biggest goalpost for the city of Rochester expanding their landfill capacity is the EPA approval, which they don't have yet. And so kind of everything that they're doing is pending that. I think if and when they receive approval to expand to those 60 acres of additional landfill capacity. What that will do is extend their anticipated sunset of the facility. Which would be good for us only to the extent that that's always going to be the cheapest place for us to bring our trash. So when it's closed, it will be more expensive for us to take trash elsewhere. So the longer that facility is open, the cheaper it will be for Barrington to get rid of its trash.
And a few more years maybe.
Maybe, yeah, but the EPA has not, Erin, you might know better than me. Okay, the EPA has not approved their additional 60 acre of landfill capacity that they're pursuing. But that would be a big deal if, when that happens. Incidentally, the other thing that bearing, that, um, the Rochester planning board denied, one of the members advocated for was trying to declare that building adjustment as a project of regional impact, which would have involved Barrington and Dover. So whether that was, should have been a region, project regional impact or not, I don't know. Certainly the landfill expansion should be, in my opinion. The conservation commission is following it closely though. They met, um, recently and they discussed, um, the topic of it being a project regional impact. And I think that they were going to drop a note to one of our strat regional planning commissioners, um, Steve Diamond, to, to look into that. So, um, there'll be more information.
All right. Thank you.
FYI, on the, on the presentation numbers is a little off. On. Forty-three, fifty.
It is on your printout, yes. And I apologize, I should have said, because it's, it's noted 2,000 in, on the, the sheet that I provided, but it's actually 2,500.
Yeah. So the 2024 budget request, 110,000. Perfect.
So the next line item is the transfer station bulky waste disposal line. And this line is used for waste management invoices for the demo and bulky waste. Again, each year our hauling and tonnage rates increase annually. But this line was underspent in 2023. And this is all due to attendance being more diligent and making sure that we're not accepting out-of-town material. And that we've been able to maximize the containers by crushing more, um, with having our lead attendant be able to operate the backhoe. And he's able to spend more time throughout shifts when we are open to make sure that we can crush, which leads to less hauls. So we were able to reduce this line by $5,000. The transfer station recycling line. This line is used for invoices for the waste management and recycle America for the hauling and the processing fees for recycling. This line will be. It was supposed to be, say, overspent, I believe, um, in 2023. We're looking to increase this line by 10% in 2024. Processing on recycling continues to remain high. And we are looking to increase resident awareness and education to make sure we are recycling the appropriate material. Unfortunately, recycling still remains unpredictable year after year. And I, I don't have that magic crystal ball that's going to be able to tell us what's going to happen from year to year with recycling. So we are looking to increase this by $15,000. The next line that we have a reduction is in is the transfer station electronics removal. This line is used for electronic recycling invoices. And we've been able to reduce some of our bills by turning in commodities, which consists of RAM, wire, computer motherboards, hard drives, elliptical drives and computers. Optical drives, sorry. While we can reduce some of the bills, the quantity of electronics keep coming in and is still increasing. But the attendant has been doing a great job by being able to maximize the container. And is reducing a lot of the material that does not belong in there, um, which we used to get charged a miscellaneous waste fee for. So more stuff is going into metal, which we get revenue for and, um, less stuff, like more of the plastic stuff is put into bulk, which costs less than having the electronics company deal with it. So we are looking to reduce that line by 7,500. So like Connor touched upon, um, he gave kind of like the, as of 11/8, the revenue to date for the transfer station is $217,000, which includes electronics, trash, bag sales, tires, bulk and metal. So one of the things Mark had touched upon was an improvement. And I like to show everybody what we do at the transfer station, um, on the outside. For, other than just taking in waste, um, we have made some improvements. So the MSW building received a long overdue makeover, which we had an issue with rodents that had moved into the ceiling. So to ensure employee safety, the building was gutted as well as having a consistent pest control. So we have reduced and we have had no sign since, um, doing this renovation. So the renovation included new insulation, sheet rock, new ceiling, fresh coat of paint, new flooring. We were able to increase the windows on the side of the MSW building, which led to better visibility. And then the one thing that's left to be done is the metal sheeting on the roof to ensure that the rodents will not return. So this was kind of like the in-process, um, where it was down to the studs. And then we got everything up and then some paint. And then this is the final product. Obviously we've added a non-slip rug and everything for the attendant. And he was able to move, um, his desk and everything back in. So, um, great job to the highway department, um, and the workers who were able to get this done in a timely fashion. One of the other things that we did at the transfer station is to reduce the pedestrian traffic walking across the yard. Was that we moved the electronics and the tire container, which are now, um, over by the glass container. And then, um, this will allow for better view for the attendance, so we don't get any unwanted dumping. And for those who utilize the transfer station, you notice that we were able to re-stripe the parking stalls. And we were able to straighten them out and create additional spaces. And if you look on the picture on the right-hand side, we were able to carry over the line, which then was, is essentially a pedestrian walkway. So people cannot pull up next to the building anymore. I always do a roadside cleanup recap. And we had about 100 volunteers again that hit the roads of Barrington. And in total, we collected, um, 1,860 pounds of trash. So we are consistently seeing, um, high numbers for roadside trash. But it is one of the biggest events that we do and have a great participation. So save the date for April 20th, 2024.
And if you can't wait that long, there's a club for that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's Don't Trash Barrington. Don't Trash Barrington, um, and they have their own Facebook page. So, um, you know, and I also encourage residents to come see me and, you know, you, it's not limited to one day. I can provide blue bags, but what I've been doing is I've also given them letters. So there isn't much question of, you know, what they're doing. It's, it's kind of, it makes it more certified. Again, I just include the smart recycling guide for Barrington. When in doubt, throw it out. And then, um, looking ahead, because I, you know, we, we are continuing to try to improve not only ourselves, but for the residents and what we're doing. We recently, um, got a feasibility study going through CMA. So the work included in the task order is scheduled, um, to be completed. The work commenced in September. The draft feasibility study for town review will be January 2024 with a final document submitted and presentation in March of 2024. Um, and when we'll have more information as it becomes available. We're going to continue to look at waste diversions. We're going to continue with the plastic film recycling that is done at the transfer station, which is now run by volunteers. Uh, the plastic cap collection, the library started this program and we are continued as a drop-off location. We'd like to look at options for rigid plastics and the potential of styrofoam recycling. And then we are going to be looking at an onsite freon reclamation, which will reduce what's get sent through. Because right now all the refrigerators and the ACs are sent through our electronics. And if we do an onsite freon reclamation, that stuff can go into our metal container. And then it could be added to our metal run, revenue. And then keeping up with the resident education, um, teaming up with the transfer station and recycling review committee to host more resident workshops. This past summer, we were able to do a compost, at-home composting workshop and we had a great turnout. And, you know, just trying to be more visible on social media. So again, as our town population grows, so does the amount of household trash that is created. So we encourage residents to challenge themselves to reduce their household solid waste by keeping more of it out of the trash bag. Some ways to do that are by recycling, rethinking your purchases and composting at home. So thanks for listening. Do you guys have any questions?
I don't have a question, just a, a comment. The library now has the, um, the best, the bags and the pickers for checkout for Bill Trash Barrington at the library. Great collaboration amongst the two departments to ensure people gather those. Thought that was terrific.
Erin, are you going to talk about the warrant article?
I can. Um, we just, again, it's the warrant article that we have for the long-term restructuring of the transfer station facilities. Again, we're just asking for 25,000. We're going to have more information, which I know the timing is kind of off, right Connor? Like with what we're going to have for the report for the feasibility study for making, you know, the request for the warrant article.
Yeah. So how we've operated the last couple of years, this is one of those situations where we know at a minimum, the, the base level thing that we want to do at that facility is pave the whole yard. And the thinking has been before we pave the yard, let's make sure that this is the flow that we want at the facility. And so that's why, that's part of the feasibility study that CMA is doing right now. And so as far as contributions, we won't know what our total cost is going to be for adjustments at that facility until after the feasibility study, study is done. But what we do know is that paving that facility will cost a lot of money. And so more money than we have in that account. So if we're looking for something tangible to say, okay, where is this 25,000 dollars going towards? Very simply, 25,000 dollars is going towards paving the yard. And it will be more than that, once we know if we're making any flow adjustments or other facility adjustments. And so, you know, by the time deliberative session rolls around, we'll have some talking points about kind of the trajectory that we think we're going, um, from the CMA feasibility study. But long-term, you know, it'll be a, a year or two before we're putting those plans in place. And luckily by the, or luckily, likely by the time that comes, um, we'll need a, a bigger request. Whether it be through the capital reserve or a one-time warrant article request. Hopefully not a bond, but maybe a bond, um, in order to, to implement whatever recommendations are made.
And I, I'd just like to touch on that, that a lot of the improvements that we've done so far have been through like CMA and their recommendations with, you know, extending the bunker and putting a third, um, container into the bunker. Reducing the pedestrian traffic going across the parking lot, strating out the parking stalls. So these were all minor things, excuse me, that we could do within the budget right now. You know, to increase the safety and just make sure that we have a better flow. Excuse me, that we could do within the budget right now, um, you know, to increase the safety and just make sure that we have a better flow.
Uh, thanks Erin. Um, a couple of things. I I like the idea of the freon collection. I'll be curious how that develops over time. I think the getting the metal recycled from that could be really valuable. The bag prices, as I recall, when we did the last increase, there was very little complaint. In fact, most people said this was long overdue. And so I think that we should probably not be afraid of of, you know, the realistic cost of disposal and 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 having that 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 user kind of charge, uh, maybe even sooner than when we talk about it with ABC, but you know, even with this year's budget, maybe something to consider. Um, the contract with waste management. When is that expired?
Twenty, end of twenty twenty-six.
Okay. And 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 we were trying to buffer or plan ahead for that as well, given that anticipated increases there?
That's right. Yeah. So it's in my administrator report, but the other topic for discussion with the advisory budget committee and the transfer station recycling center review committee will be the topic of that special revenue fund. You remember the select boards talked about it a couple of times previously. That's the idea that I had of if we're not going to renegotiate and extend the contract, because we don't want to pay for that now. We've got a sweetheart contract now, let's ride it out. We should be doing something to be prepared for that. So the special revenue fund, you know, the idea is that it would do two things. First, we would start saving money aside to buffer out that cost increase. But second, to your first point about raising fees, instead of raising fees, doubling fees or even more in twenty twenty-seven to meet the added cost, we increase fees gradually now, where we're increasing fees fifteen percent every year. And then by the time twenty twenty-seven rolls around, we might still have a jump, but it's not a doubling of fees. Maybe it's a twenty-five percent increase that year. And so um, that's still very much the plan I have, um, you know, flagged as a potential warrant article establishing that special revenue fund. Um, the budget committee thought it was a good idea to meet with the transfer station committee to kind of, you know, talk it out and see, is this the best way to do that? One of the things that came up at the budget committee meeting too, and I know I mentioned this to the select board, but by the time twenty twenty-seven rolls around, if we have have established this special revenue fund and have a few hundred thousand dollars in it, we could also consider at that time, buying a ten-wheel roll-off truck and doing hauling ourselves. And just do have the contract with waste management be the tipping fees. And we're actually part of the uh, Lamprey.
Regional Cooperative.
Cooperative, which is a volume discount for uh, tipping fees. And they have a contract with waste management, which we can take advantage of. So maybe our solution to the dramatic cost increase is to do more in-house, which you heard the road agent talk about how hard it is to buy equipment and find people to drive the equipment. So who knows if twenty twenty-seven will be any better, but the special revenue fund is, gives us that flexibility. Yep. So more to come on that.
The more you do that, and and I know Mark just stepped up, but you can leverage and maybe that brings us to the point where we have a mechanic to actually do all of it, take care of all of these trucks too. Um, last thing Erin, um, what's your thought on a a a swap shop? I I hate, a lot of people seem to ask about it and as a way of of reducing what's going into the trash, a way of reusing rather than just recycling.
So anytime I'm asked if somebody can leave somebody at the transfer station, my suggestion is to either put it online, um, put it at the end of their driveway. It's really, really hard. Um, if you go to Lee, which is, you know, everybody is, how they run the swap shop is is great. But they have a dedicated employee to do this and they also charge some of the fees. Um, you know, again, we would have to have a separate building for this, because we do handle cash and the trash bags are in the recycling building. Um, you know, do you then supply power to this? And then obviously it would need to be run by volunteers. Um, you know, it's something that we've discussed in the new plan. If there was a ever, you know, with the feasibility study, the potential of a new facility of incorporating something like this, because you know, our our biggest thing is that we are trying to reduce waste and obviously we want people to start reusing things if it's still good. So we do suggest other options before they throw it out. Um, so it's hard. I I would say no, because it's an added thing. Um, you know, as it is, we're still having issues. There are some times that residents leave bikes on the side, which are good, you know, um, that's easily easily manageable. Um, it's the other stuff that then becomes a problem.
And it's not something, I mean, the transfer station, one of the founding charges of the transfer station recycling center review committee was, how do we do a swap shop? You know, that that has been a topic of discussion, will continue to be a topic of discussion. And uh, residents ask me all the time too, you know, hey, why don't, why can't we have a swap shop here? And my favorite answer is if we had one, would you be willing to volunteer there? Because I don't suspect, although we haven't asked, I don't suspect residents would want to hire an additional employee to to man the swap shop, which you you need to have somebody there. Um, because there's, you know, people bring stuff that, oh, hey, I can give it to the swap shop and then I'll have to pay to dispose of it or, you know, vice versa. So um, it is, I I don't think it's off the table. It's off the table at the moment. Doing the, any flow adjustments of the facility and planning for it there seems to be the better long-term plan for hey, how could we implement something like that? Um, but I I don't want you to think that the transfer station recycling center review committee isn't considering, because they are, I mean, they talk about it regularly, but um, it's tough to implement right now.
I've I've heard that and we do that at each of the meetings, someone brings that up. I will also get it a little bit later this evening when I go home. For a swap shop. Um, but yeah, that the committee has considered that frequently.
It's very difficult, um, after running the home It is very difficult and very time-consuming and costly to physically move items around, organize them in a way that people can see them, um, utilizing Facebook and saying, hey, I've got this fabulous, you know, outdoor water table or piece of playground equipment. If you'd like it, alert me, I'll give you the address and inevitably someone comes and picks it up. It's a much, I think, more effective way to gift your unused items to somebody who will.
Can you hear it from anybody who's been involved in a junkyard? And I know I've heard it um, from Rick. Uh, he's spent a while working and every time you touch something, it the, it loses value. Um, and even if you're giving something away, it costs money every time somebody has to transport it or or do something. And so, hey, with the rise of the internet and our, you know, digitally connected world, if you just have to move it to the end of your driveway and somebody wants it, pick it up, now you're you're touching it less and it's worth more.
You just put a free sign on that.
We see, we have friends, we live on a dead-end road and we have friends, we need to get rid of things that uh, we take it there, because they have high traffic and hey, that's find a, find a friend who lives on an artery road and bring your stuff there.
Thanks Erin.
Anything, any other comments? Steve, would you come on up? Give us the ABC.
I really can't contribute much more. Connor did a great job of explaining the concerns that the ABC had in in dealing with the transfer budget. And in the warrant article, yes, the ABC's consensus was uh, you would find very little support if it's not more detailed to it. So Connor's suggestion of of expanding the description to include paving, something that's that's tangible, that didn't we know is going to cost more and and will need to set somebody up on, that that would gain support within the ABC for that warrant.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, roll call.
Gibsonite, Andrew Kelly.
Yep, the LOI. Moving on to appointments, I see none. Uh, the staff report, Mr. McGover.
Thank you. So November work anniversaries, I won't read through, uh, because we did that at the last meeting, but I do appreciate those employees. Uh, tax bills. So tax bills are going out on Wednesday. And in your packet, uh, you will find a copy of the insert, which will be mailed with every one of the tax bills. Granted, it'll be in black and white and on a yellow piece of paper, because um, well, you know, costs. So um, the biggest, the biggest piece of information uh, in this insert is the description of the revaluation. What it was, what it did do, what it didn't do, um, what to do for each individual property taxpayer. You know, go online, look at your property tax record card, ask questions, contact the assessing office if you have concerns. Uh, and then more importantly, if you feel like you need assistance and you're eligible, a full um, listing of the exemptions and credits that we currently offer and how to apply for those. There's also some notes from um, other departments, the recreation department's running a survey right now. Um, and so anybody that is interested in contributing to what they want the rec department to do next, um, whether it be programs or events, go check that out. Um, and so uh, tax bills will be due on December eighteenth. And um, once, yeah, 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 this is the town's Christmas card.
Did I say that? I'm sorry.
I'll note that the um, you know, we include a historical uh, listing of the uh, tax rates back to two thousand eighteen and also the pie chart to show where that money's going, um, right? So seventy-four percent to the school, ten percent to the county, sixteen percent to the town. Um, once the rest of the communities in the state have their tax rate set, I'll redo that analysis of where Barrington falls. You know, I have the Barrington is big, Barrington is small, um, as part of the budget presentation I've been doing. So I'll update that data, but we won't have moved a lot, um, because our municipal portion is still a a fraction of the overall uh, tax rate. Um, and so, any questions on that?
I like the insert, very helpful.
Credit to Tiffany. Um, yes.
Surprise, surprise.
Many, many hats off warranted indeed. Okay, moving on, um, the joint advisory budget committee meeting, um, I have talked about both of those topics. They will be meeting and reporting back, so stay tuned. Um, there, there was also a question about how a federal shutdown might impact municipal services. I'm glad to report that um, we have no indication that a federal government shutdown would indicate the uh, would impact the provision of local government services that we have. We don't deal with the federal government directly hardly at all, which is great, because getting that one and a half million dollars was an absolute nightmare. And I would pull my hair out if I had to regularly interface with the federal government. So um, the state is better suited to be impacted, because they do deal with federal programs. And back in September, when a federal um, shutdown, uh, government shutdown was looming, they put out a report which indicated that in the short term, they didn't even anticipate that a federal government shutdown would dramatically impact the services or the responsibilities of the state government. There were some federal programs like um, WIC payments that would be temporarily reduced. Um, and you know, a longer-term shutdown would certainly have more impacts on some of the programs that are federally funded but state-administered. Um, and so, uh, but at the, at the local, local level, um, you know, our our money is raised and spent primarily locally and we don't anticipate any change in services. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Moving on to old business, proposed library purchase and sales agreement. Did I, I'm sorry.
You're forgiven, it's all right. Uh, two voluntary change of address forms, changing two addresses on Hansonville Road to a new road, Yonder Way.
Yonder Way?
Yonder Way. No, just two addresses on a shared driveway. There are three addresses on the shared driveway. However, only two of them are in Barrington. Those two will be on Yonder Way.
There were two, what was the number?
Uh, two one fifteens?
There were two one fifteen Hansonvilles. One, there was one fifteen Hansonville Rochester, one that was one fifteen Hansonville Barrington. And our esteemed E nine-one-one expert said, hey, that's a problem. Let's not wait for a house to start burning before we figure that out. And I spent a year solving the problem.
Oh.
Um, part of the, part of that year was spent working with the city of Rochester to mutually agree on a name for the road, so that we could, that all three addresses could have. That didn't work. And so now we're gonna have a shared driveway that serves three houses. The house that's in Rochester will have a Hansonville address. The two houses in Barrington will now have a Yonder Way address.
And you're telling us the federal government is complicated.
Yeah, I mean, this shouldn't be that complicated, but
I don't know.
But fortunately now there are not two houses with the same number and street name next to each other. And so
In separate towns, city and a town.
Yeah, okay.
And credit to Rick and Mark and everyone else who's put up with me for the past year, Greg, about this.
Do we have any other um, flooding municipality and roads that this occurs on, or is this the only one?
We'll let you know when we find them.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna go look at all of our municipal orders now. Okay, can I tell you though, um, and especially because Tiffany and Erin didn't like the idea and I loved it. Um, and I think George and Rick loved it also. So Rick made a suggestion for the road name, which was perfect, Gunnington. It's a road that splits Gonnick and Barrington, Gunnington. And that was immediately vetoed by Rochester. We should have gone back to Gunnington once they backed out, but
We may have to, we may have to do our, they, our charter mandate.
Paramulation.
Paramulation.
Oh.
To make sure it's really there.
We'll have to check all these roads.
You know, it's the select board that has to walk our entire boundary, so.
Yeah, I saw where they had to do that, the Vermont-New Hampshire border. All right, um, moving on to old business, proposed library purchase and sale agreement. Are you doing this?
Yes. Yep. Okay, so um, the the select board previously authorized uh, me to begin negotiations uh, for a purchase and sale at the property at four twenty-six Caleb Highway, which is the former Frisbee Urgent Care, for the purposes of a, the site of a new future library. Um, we heard that there'll be a warrant article, um, that the select boards seem comfortable presenting to voters, asking of voters to fund this project. So the asking price for the property is one point one million. Um, in negotiations, they've tentatively agreed to a a purchase price of a million dollars. And what I'm looking for the select board to do is authorize these conceptual terms, um, with one uh, adjustment. Um, that if you feel comfortable authorizing some flexibility, um, so that when HCA finally signs on the dotted line, we can sign and get under agreement. You'll remember that we talked about how we could have these discussions behind closed doors and non-public pursuant to the land provisions of the ninety-one A statute, but felt that it was important that this process be fully open and transparent and residents understand the process that we're going through, um, to secure the property and bring the proposal to them in March. And so I highlighted some of the important terms. I mean, it's a dozens of page document.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the the biggest things, purchase price, million dollars. I'll talk about deposit in a second. Um, timeline. So this is an important one. We're asking for them to take this off the market and have a final decision in March of whether we're not going, we're going to buy it, because voters have to decide. And then not close until September, because it takes a couple of months to get the bond proceeds back. And so that timeline is an important part of this, um, that they're comfortable with. Finally is the deed restriction. So it's important to HCA that this not become a competing medical facility. And so they're imposing deed restrictions on the property. So our plan is to buy it and turn it into a library. And so that's not really a a problem for us, which makes us a good candidate for buying it. Because somebody else that might be looking at reselling it in the future and having a restriction where they can't use it as a medical facility. And likely that's one of the reasons their asking price was below even the town's assessed value for the property. Um, because it has less value if you built a building for a medical facility and you're saying it can't be used for a medical facility. Interesting. Okay, coming back to the deposit. So um, this, we have gone a, gone a couple of circles and I'll just tell you where we are now. So there are two options for the deposit, which um, the ball is currently in HCA's court to decide exactly which option or which combination the options are comfortable with. The first is a a twenty thousand dollar refundable deposit, which says that um, if the town takes the project to to town meeting in March, whether they say yes or no, the town uh, would have a fully refundable deposit, less a hundred dollars. If the uh, bond is approved and the town pursues bond funding, um, but doesn't get it for some crazy reason, um, the deposit would also be refundable. It would only really be non-refundable if the town in bad faith backed out of the deal after all of the conditions were met. And so the point of saying that is the risk is relatively low. If there's a deposit and and up to twenty thousand dollars, the the library foundation has agreed to fund that. And essentially, that would be just part of the... If everything is approved, that would just go towards buying down the purchase of the $1 million property. So the second piece, an option that we put on the table and HCA took off at the beginning, is abating the taxes. So we're in the unique position that the select board has the authority to abate taxes for good cause. Good cause could be, hey, we're trying to own this property and it doesn't need... It's not going to be on the tax rolls in six months, so we can abate the taxes. And so that doesn't cost... That doesn't have a direct cost to anybody. We don't have to come up with that money. It's just taking that tax liability. So the second half tax bill on that property is $5,000, a little more than $5,000. And so HCA seems increasingly interested in having that be part of the deposit, where we would agree to abate the taxes while we're under agreement. There may still be a deposit, but I thought we were all good with the $20,000 deposit. And then they kind of came back and said, oh, no, actually, we like that idea about the taxes because we just heard that you set your tax rate and are going to issue tax bills. And sure would be nice if we didn't have to pay that. I think either option is good for us. It's small potatoes, it gets it off the market. And the big thing for us is the timeline, the purchase price. And if we can get them under terms for either of those deposit structures, I think that's good for us. So I'm happy to answer questions, but if you're... If and when you're comfortable, I'm looking for you to approve either the deposit, the mostly refundable deposit, or the tax abatements or some combination of the two in addition to the rest of the terms so that when they're... We reach agreement, we can sign and move on.
I make that motion.
Yeah, so we would just add, approve the terms of the purchase and sale with the deposit, with a $20,000 deposit or abatement of taxes or a combination thereof.
That's what I said.
Perfect.
Second, enthusiastically, let's get this building.
Is there any discussion? Ready to move? Okay, roll call.
Articoff line?
Gibsonite.
New Hampshire line.
Happy L O I. Wonderful.
Moving round.
Yes, new business, advisory budget committee's scope and whether we want to change that.
So I'm surprised the chair didn't stick around for this part of the conversation. So the budget committee, every year, encounters warrant articles where they scratch their head and say, should we have an opinion about this or not? And it's decisions... Richardson Pond Dam is a good one for this year because as taxpayers, the members of the budget committee absolutely have an opinion on whether the town should tear the dam down or rebuild it and how that impacts costs. From, with their budget committee hat on, they're saying, oh, well, you know, we could say that because this policy decision impacts future costs, that we have a role here and should dedicate our time to having an opinion and sharing that with the select board so that they can help them make their decision. And before they go down that rabbit hole with the Richardson Pond Dam or other topics that might come up, they wanted to check in with the select board, and they're going to discuss this tomorrow night as well, about what the scope and charge really is. Included in your packet, the history. Where did the budget committee come from, right? You don't have to have a budget committee. Our budget committee is an advisory budget committee, and so it's not even really in statute. It doesn't have any specific authority. There are a couple of articles. In 2009, the voter said, we care enough about the budget committee's opinion that we want their numerical tallies on warrant articles to help us make a decision when we vote. In 2014 was the most recent attempt to move the advisory budget committee to an official budget committee, which would be they are the ones that make the budget, present it to voters. It's a whole different dynamic. Voters didn't like that idea. But what they did approve at that time was that the select board appoint the five members and up to two alternates for the budget committee, advisory budget committee, which was originally started in 1976, which I'll remind you, we learned recently that Don Hatch was one of the original members of that 1976 advisory budget committee. So anyways, finally, there's an article from the New Hampshire Municipal Association talking about budget committees. It talks about official budget committees, but also the value of advisory budget committees and addresses some of that. So what say the select board?
Madam Chair, first of...
Yes.
Now, I have watched over the past five years. I think the advisory budget committee does an excellent job of both addressing issues that we, as a select board, may not think of and also sharing really important perspective. But as you know, the budget is the voter's budget. It is not the select board's budget. It's not any of the department's budget. It's not the town's budget. It is the voter's budget. And so I feel very comfortable that the work that they're doing is both valuable and that the scope of their work is very adequate to produce an appropriate voter's budget.
Anything you want to say? So bottom line, I think you are saying, and I would agree with, that continuing it as an advisory budget committee as opposed to having an official budget committee.
And that wasn't really the question.
That wasn't the question.
I don't think anybody on the budget committee wants an official budget committee. I think they're... And Dan, and help me here. I think the question is those topics that aren't really the budget, aren't really a direct financial impact. But if you think about it, it's a policy decision that does have a financial impact. So do you want the ABC weighing in or not?
This came up with the community power of New Hampshire aggregate, the idea that we could save, that taxpayers could save a lot of money on their energy bill, but it's not a direct tax bill savings. And so for budget savings.
Yeah, let's ask it...
So your question was whether community power should... I assume it didn't, should have gone to ABC?
So, yeah, if that warrant to join the community power coalition should go to the ABC for their green light or sums up.
Great example. So, and how that would look is if the select board is of the opinion that that's within the scope of the ABC, then the budget committee would review the topic. The budget committee would take a vote on whether or not they recommend it. If the select board felt it wasn't in the scope, then it would just be the select board's opinion and numerical tally that's with the warrant. But yeah, maybe that's a better example than even the Richardson Pond Dam.
I think it's worth the select board being able to put forward or ask for their weigh-in on articles.
They've not been seated during that timeframe. When those decisions were being made, they're meeting during budget timeframe. These things are taking... I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, no, specifically talking about warrants. So that they do... They're in session for the warrants that are being proposed. And so, you know, something like the community power is going to be owed a warrant, doesn't cost the taxpayer anything, but could save them a lot of money.
I guess I thought in my mind that they do weigh in on... They don't give...
Only the financial ones.
Financial.
And I think that makes sense to me that they would weigh in on financial, but not other warrant articles.
So the CPNH, by our terms, is not financial because it's not on the budget, it's not a taxpayer issue other than what they would save on their energy bill. But because it has that financial implication, I think it may warrant the select board asking them to weigh in or support if they feel they could to encourage that savings.
I feel like that's a little bit of scope creep.
That's sort of how I feel.
I don't... Please don't think that I don't appreciate it. I think I'm really a group of people. I think that that's a little bit of the scope creep. And then the messaging and the communication, like for instance with Richardson's dam. We're still waiting to hear what E S thinks we should do with that. Having to take a meeting, convey the information, receive the information back here, you know, three weeks, four weeks later. And if the information comes in when they're not seated and it's not budget season, I think it begins to really muddy the scope of the work. That's just one select...
I'm fine with that. It was just what I had realized and some other committees realized is that it wasn't really clear. We weren't really sure which... And so if we limit the warrants to those that impact the budget, hence the taxpayer, then that makes sense.
Dan?
Yeah, I've been on that committee for a long time. And I think that this is best, I mean, where we are right now. I agree, it is kind of mission creep here. I think getting further and further. Because basically, everything we do involves a budget. Reminds me that it used to be a rule that the Marine Corps could only enter Joint Chiefs of Staff things if there was something pertinent. Someone said, one of the... They were arguing, and one said, what in the hell the Marine Corps have to do with this? He stood up and said, the defense of the United States is the Marine Corps' business.
I think the, you know, the Richardson Pond Dam. If there's a warrant article for 200,000, the budget committee is going to have an opinion. They're going to, you know, they're going to discuss it. But I think what I'm hearing is the select board doesn't expect the budget committee to discuss and make a recommendation on the policy decision that the select board's going to make. Not dissimilar to adding a position. The budget committee does not involve itself with the policy decisions of saying the fire department needs another position and we're going to do this. The budget committee is burdened with, okay, the select board said that they're going to add a position in the fire department, we need to try to build a budget around that and, you know, make adjustments that we're comfortable with.
Are the numbers accurate for it? Is there something that they haven't thought of? Is the department head spot on that that additional FTE is required right now? Yeah, those types of...
Are we going to go somewhere else? Are we going to make up for that by decreasing some other item?
And maybe what we do in, maybe towards the end of this month or the beginning of next month, once we have most of the warrant articles for the warrant ready, is that we dedicate a 10 minutes of a select board meeting just going through the list and making sure we're all on the same page on which warrant articles we want the budget committee to weigh in on. I mentioned in here the exemptions and credits. We have previously had the budget committee make a... Record their numerical tally on exemptions and credits. That's kind of similar to community power. It has a financial impact, but it's not a budget. It's not an appropriation of dollars. And so, you know, from what we're talking about, it kind of sounds like if there are any changes to the exemptions and credits, maybe we don't need their opinion on it. But regardless, when it gets to that point, end of this month, beginning of next month, we'll bring the full list. Select board can, you know, have some more discussion then and decide finally, should the ABC weigh in or not, while there's still a chance for them, while they're still seated.
And I never want to... I never want to create like essential position functions for them that in any way we forget to ask about. And so, which is why the concern of scope creep for me even comes into play. I never want to offend a volunteer who's spending hours upon hours reviewing the voter's budget and then we forgot to include something because in our mind, it didn't include those dollars.
Rob had something else.
Rob?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Moving on. Okay. Select board reports and concerns.
We have a driven housing committee meeting for the housing master plan today. And we went over all of the information gathering. What an incredible community response we actually got. And...
498.
Yeah, and they're pulling together some overlays. So the committee had requested some overlays that we could use to present information to residents. By and large, it was a little shocking. I think we found that 49% of Barringtonites have been in this town for at least 10 years. It, the... It's just, it was very interesting data. And one of the greatest things we saw is, we all know when you're looking at demographics, is we saw almost a perfect bell curve with the number of participants from different age categories that had participated with the survey information, so...
And regional planning said that was unusual to see that.
Yeah, so we were really excited about that. There'll be another meeting before all of the information goes forward to actually draft the plan. There were so many responses to the detailed part of it that they're trying to figure out how to best to gather a qualitative analysis of that and get the information out there. So it's going to be interesting.
And one of the things they're going to play with is scenario planning. So they'll take all this information, and they were asking us for ideas of how to do scenario planning with the data. So one of the ideas was if we were to change our 80,000 square feet zoning, what would it look like if it was three acres or five acres or one acre?
Or one acre, yeah. And we also asked from a regional perspective because, you know, in Barrington, we think we're very special, and we are. So I said, you know, we're kind of the unicorn of Stratford County where we have such a large land mass and we have so much conserved land and we have so much water and we have so much current use. Can you give us an overlay of that? Because we'd also like to look at the municipalities. We keep hearing from a regional perspective about housing. But I think it's important for us to see in comparison to our region, are we really the unicorn we think we are? Working on that this one.
To your point about relaying that qualitative, like at the listening session for the housing.
Yes.
They did a great thing. The library group did the same thing with the listening session, where they have all these different images and pictures. And then people put their dots on what they like, would want to see in Barrington. Does the planning board, are they getting those visuals?
I don't know if they're going to get the visuals.
Well, that's a good question. I'm guessing not unless we urge regional planning to share it in that way. We saw some of that today.
I would encourage if they could really... They put a lot of time into putting those visuals. And there were some really good, obvious favorites. Yeah, and I think that with all the changes that are happening, and I go back to this on the 125 corridor and such, I think that if they could see some of these visuals, that'd be really valuable.
They also put together a full list. We were, I think, somewhat shocked by this as a committee group that they put together a full list of approved housing and apartment projects. And in the next two years, there was approval for 376? Have I got that right? 374?
It's 300.
Housing units, kind of a split of individual family homes and multiple. So quite interesting that what we experienced for growth over a decade has now been approved to occur, and we need to be thinking of what that means.
Thank you.
Nothing really new since we last met. The conservation committee did meet, but there were no planning reviews happening. They were just discussing more of the... Love, Jack, love. Jack, love, the, the property adjacent to the Swains.
That's it.
Yeah, the water district, so.
School Board met, and they had interviews for the new appointment for the Select Board, School Board. They had four really good candidates, actually, kind of impressive group. And they selected Tim Hatfield, who was a previous board member, had run, I think Stephanie had taken his place. They did present their budget for the first time. It was 29,819,000 and some dollars, which is a 6.4% increase in their proposed budget. Mostly personnel costs, some new personnel hires, and then just kind of the inflationary cost with their facilities. Everyone comes to the ABC, I get ABC meetings and library meetings all get presented, so you've heard all of that stuff. I guess there's a meeting tomorrow. I guess at 4:30.
That's right.
My email didn't come. It'll be there at 4:30.
Anything else?
Planning Board, surprisingly, last week, most things were continued until December meeting. We did approve Greg Bolton to have two 48-panel solar trackers behind Caleb's. And a request for an applicant, for a mixed structure, to put a residence up on an existing commercial building. I think that was Rochester Sports. And everything else was continued. We do have a Planning Board meeting tomorrow night, and looking at the agenda, talking about proposed growth in Barrington, we'll be doing a conceptual review for 168, 160 dwellings, a variety of different types of dwellings, over on Poots Farm, off Canaan, Canaan Back Road.
That's that $8 million estate.
Yeah, so they must have, they're not doing, I mean, I didn't see that on the plan.
Was intended at one time, it's the back office.
So, public comment. Do we have any public comments? Please come forward, state your name and address.
I can sit down.
Susan Guardiello, 528 Franklin Pierce Highway. And I'm here mostly with my library trustee hat on. So, it's, I have sat through the whole meeting, but I mostly was excited to continue to see your support for this project. We're very excited about it, and have had good communication with Connor. When Connor reached out to me and to the foundation to talk about the deposit, and I don't know how, if you were aware, but Roger immediately put out a poll to the board members. Everybody immediately responded with yes, yes, yes. So, we're all very excited about it. The one question that just occurred to me this evening on that is if we do the deposit as opposed to the tax, I'm not sure whether the town will need to actually accept a donation, go through that process. I know trustees do. I think the Select Board does for that large a donation. So, it might be, that's just a suggestion, Connor. Another trustee had spoken to me about something in their town. I think the intent was that the foundation would write the check directly to the whoever is handling the escrow account, but you might wanna just check that through.
Yeah, and so that would be, anything, yeah, RSA 3195B, anything over $10,000, you just have to hold a public hearing. And so, that...
$5,000?
Twenty. The deposit would be $20,000. Yeah, I wonder, where is this a deposit? Yeah, well, we'll get an answer to that. I appreciate the point.
I'm sure we will accept it.
Yes, but I think...
But go through any statutory process.
There was some communication with another library, and not the same situation, but something similar with a transfer of, of funds related to a building project. And they got NHMA legal advice, I think, on that. So, anyway, that was just passing that along on that.
Is there, is there a vote tonight, accepting that, in essence, accepting the...
You can't, so if it, if it is considered a donation per RSA 3195B, it would need to be a public hearing, noticed in the newspaper. If it's less than $10,000, you still have to have a public hearing, it doesn't have to be noticed in the newspaper. I'm inclined to think that the voters are the ones that will ultimately decide when they vote on, on accepting those funds. And so, whereas it's not even an expenditure, because it's almost fully refundable until then, I almost feel like that process wouldn't be necessary because it will be included in the warrant article. But we'll ask just to make sure. But it's...
It's actually, assuming this all goes forward, we'll still have this issue at some point in the future, because the foundation would be donating more money.
Yeah, that would happen in the warrant article, though. The purpose of RSA 3195B is only to make sure that residents understand and have an opinion to weigh in on money coming in. That they are the ones that would be accepting it if it's in the warrant article for the library project. That's where it would be listed, raise an appropriate X number of dollars.
Some of these technical, legal things, so.
Actually, town could give that $20,000 out of whatever fund we have being fungible. And, and at some later date, accept a gift from the foundation.
We could do that, but because our funds lapse at the end of the year, we wouldn't be able to replenish it from the same pot. And so, I, I would advise against that. We could accept it as revenue in 2024, but we couldn't, if it was in the same calendar year, we could say, spend the $20,000 and then put the $20,000 back. But if we spend the $20,000 this year, the books close December 31st, and, and when we go to put it back, there's nowhere to put it back to, so it would just be collected as revenue.
And then it wouldn't be refunded back to the foundation.
So, it would be less fungible. It would be unfungible.
Yeah, I sat back there thinking, do I even mention this?
I don't know.
The other thing, this is a follow-up to something of months ago, is that the library trustees' meeting is next Tuesday, and it's the first meeting that we are doing with the Teams process and so on.
It'll be recorded, and we'll get it uploaded.
Yes. We, we thought we would do it at our last meeting. We didn't end up recording it. You know, a little bumpy at first. So, anyway, I just wanted to get back to you folks and let you know that the library is joining you with the online access to our meetings.
Thank you.
Will it be held here?
No, it'll be at the library. And we have a setup. We do a lot of things with Zoom, but we're, we're doing this with the Teams software.
We had the library set up with a license, and I did some training with the library director. Is your owl back?
Yes, we have a, yes, we have a...
So, they have a tabletop video microphone unit?
We had a, the, the owl took a dive, I don't know, a couple months ago, and we had to get a, a replacement. And we also got one of these, you know, it can go through an earthquake kind of box to keep it in, so we won't have any more problems with that. But yes, so that's what we're working on there. So, thank you very much.
Good to see you. All right. I would entertain a motion to go into non-public session.
Any public comment online?
Oh, right, online, sorry.
Okay.
I move we go into non-public session, percent RSA 91 dash Alpha Poland 3, Roman 2, for the purpose of land.
A second. Go call.
Give tonight, not sure.
Go be low.
For transparency purposes, this does not relate to the library property, for, for those interested. For those interested.
All right, we have returned to our public session and we are now ready to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.